Good evening. I'd like to call the Finance and Administration Committee meeting to order. We're going to change a little bit of the order on the agenda tonight and do that topic first. So if I can have a roll call, please.
Alderman Artwoods.
I am here.
Alderman Curialy.
Here.
Alderman Messina.
Here.
Alderman Jacob is not here. Alderman Sismarski, not here. Alderman Ames, here. Alderman Artie Woods.
Here.
Alderman Catalin.
Here.
I'd like to make a motion for the approval of the meeting minutes for February 22nd, 2024, for the Finance and Administration Committee.
Second.
Are there any changes or corrections to the minutes? If there are none, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Matt Passon. I do have one report and recommendation this evening, an approval for a multi-year contract between the City of Wooddale and Schuman Printers, Inc., for newsletter design and printing services.
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Are there any questions or comments? I did want to just expand on that a little bit, that the newsletter printing is paid for by all the taxing bodies in Wooddale, not just the City of Wooddale. I just wanted to make that note. Items to be considered for future meetings, the commuter parking lot rates.
We haven't voted on it.
Oh, I'm sorry. Did I skip that?
She said, "Oh, we did."
Oh, we did? Oh, I didn't hear. I'm sorry.
Okay.
Great. Not bad.
Okay. Items to be considered for future meetings, the commuter parking lot rates in spring and summer, city-owned building appraisals in summer, equipment evaluation cost effectiveness for Prairie Fest in the summer. Are there any other items to be considered? There are none, then I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned?
Okay. I'd like to call the Planning, Zoning, and Building Committee meeting. Many take a take note that the same council members are present. And I'd like to make a motion to approve the February 8th of 2024 minutes.
Second.
Any corrections to the minutes? If they are none, one in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay. And let's see here. So we do have some public comments tonight, so we want to get to that. And if anybody wishes to speak, you can fill out the cards. So we do have our first speaker, Jason DeBello. If you want to go up to the podium, please. And you do have three minutes, sir, to make your public comments. Thank you.
Okay. Good evening to the mayor, all the men and women, and members of the council. My name is Jason DeBello. I live at 17W 040 Washington Street. I've been a resident of this community for 42 years, with a business supporting local businesses and residents for almost 24 years. My property lies in the center of the Cyrus One proposed development. I have been pretty vocal on my concerns for having to live in the shadow of this type of a development. My concerns were heard during both community meetings with the CDC. One of the major questions by the CDC was, how could a development like this be allowed while residents still live in the middle, some only 100 feet away from the buildings? No other surrounding municipalities have ever allowed this to even be considered. I believe this was questions without answers that compelled the CDC to vote unanimously no to this petition. I believe Cyrus One wants this project and has no intention of pulling stakes and leaving. I also believe this project would be a great thing for the City of Wooddale, just not at my family's expense. During the CDC's meetings, a representative of Cyrus One, Brad Howe, vowed to reach out to the remaining residents to address their individual concerns, and he did just that. And as of today, I can say we all have signed contracts with a closing date of May 1st. As long as these contracts are to be executed by this date, there will be no further concerns from us. I thank you for your time to listen to this matter.
Thank you. Next speaker, Thomas Luuski.
Yes.
Go ahead.
Hello, everybody. It's been contentious six years in our neighborhood with gradual dismantling of a neighborhood that consisted of over 120 houses. And Cyrus One bought 63 houses out of 70 left in November. For some reason, there were seven houses left in the middle. I'm in the middle 100 feet from proposed development. So as my predecessor here said, we all signed contracts, and our only concern is that those contracts be executed on the promised date of May 1st. In the past, there were contracts signed by Transwestern that were endlessly extended and delayed, for some of them, I believe, for over four years. So it's still in the back of our mind, but the effort of Cyrus One to sign us and buy us out seems to be genuine and straightforward, and we will have no problems. This development makes sense. If we are out, it doesn't make sense when we are still in there. So we just ask for your consideration to make sure that those contracts get executed on May 1st, and we are all out by beginning our permit of July. So that's the present situation, and thank you for considering it. Thank you to Community Development Commission for understanding our issues and showing it in their votes. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, we have Matthew. Please go.
Good evening, everyone. I just want a very short and simple little intro about me. I went to all the schools here at Wooddale, so Wooddale Junior High, obviously Oak Brook, Westview, DCC, kind of what everyone was talking about. We have contracts set up and everything. May 1st is the closing, and this all started when I was still at Fenton, so six years ago out there, maybe even seven, some of the other contracts and offers. And I just want to say, like, please protect us. I'm a grown man now. I finished college. I have a full-time job, and I'm still in this whole mess of trying to leave us behind. And please just protect us. Don't let anything happen until our contracts are fully executed. Like in the past, there were some contracts that were, you know, things happened there. But just please protect us. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. There is no other comments? Did you fill out the cards, sir?
I did not, no. I just had a really short comment.
Then just go up to the podium, state your name and address, please.
Thank you.
Hello, everybody. My name is Raphael Lasco. I'm also a resident of the Mohawk Banner subdivision. I'm here tonight just quickly to express my gratitude for the prompt and effective response to our safety concerns our community was facing a couple of weeks back. Special thanks to the mayor. I actually gave the mayor a call. He called me the exact same day. And our concerns are still there, but they are dramatically improved, and we understand that perfection is really hard to achieve. But there has been some positive changes, and just like the last resident mentioned, we would like to have continued security while we're in the subdivision since we're still seeing some break-ins. Mostly people are just, you know, running through the properties. But overall, I think everything has been trending in a positive direction, and we appreciate Mr. Brad Howe and the mayor for addressing our concerns. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other comments? Okay. So thank you very much, and your comments are duly noted. Next is report recommendation, Director Springer. You had a brief presentation on the...
I do. Thank you, Chairman.
Go ahead.
So this evening, my presentation is covering two requests for Bryn Mawr Phase 1 and Bryn Mawr Phase, I'm sorry, 2 and 3. So this is the Nippon Building. That is what we called Bryn Mawr Phase 1. This evening, we're going to be talking about Bryn Mawr Phase 2 and Bryn Mawr Phase 3. So the Phase 2, the petitioner is Cyrus One, and they are requesting this evening approval or recommendation on a special use for PUD, including concept plan and final development plan for their Phase 1, a special use for major utilities and public service utilities, and that's for the ComEd substation, final subdivision plat, which is basically a re-subdivision, and site plan review for this Phase 2 section. The Phase 3 section, which is kind of the yellow and the green, Phase 2 is the red outlines. The petitioner for that request is Transwestern Development, and they are requesting a rezoning upon annexation. And the rezoning would be to I-1 Industrial Business Park, and also approval of a preliminary subdivision plat, including the vacation of streets. So let's start with Phase 2. That was the northerly portion immediately south of Bryn Mawr. As was just mentioned, they're seeking a special use, combined concept plan and final development plan for Phase 1. And again, Phase 1 includes the first data center building and the ComEd substation. The special use for the ComEd substation is being requested, site plan review, and final plat of subdivision. There are some deviations that are being requested as part of the planned unit development. These are those. I'm not going to go through all of them. They were discussed at length and detail at the CDC public hearings, and also all that information was included in your packets. But if you do have questions on those, I can certainly address them. This is the master plan for Phase 2. Phase 2 is 24 acres in size. It was annexed and rezoned to industrial back in January of 2022. There were 32 residential structures which have already been demolished. The interior streets were vacated, but we did, the developer did allow Pine Lane, the pavement, to remain as the fire district had requested that so that they could have access to the interior of the site. As mentioned previously, there are two phases. So Phase 1 will include this ComEd substation here, stormwater detention above ground here, and Building 1. The second phase will include Building 2, and for Building 2, the stormwater will be underground under the parking lot. This is the final subdivision plat for this phase. They are taking those lots, all of those lots, and are consolidating them into three lots. Lot 1 is this larger lot, which will contain Building 1 and Building 2 and a little bit of detention. Lot 2 is where the park district, the Wooddale Park District, still owns this piece because they have a cell tower on it. And so a couple of those deviations are because this lot doesn't meet any of our minimum lot standards. Lot 3 is where the ComEd substation will be. This is a rendering of the building. This is, if you're looking at it, it's facing south, and as you can see, they've broken up and added a lot of deviation and articulation and lots of glazing. And this is kind of a bird's eye view of the whole of Phase 2. So this is that first building. This is the ComEd substation you can see tucked in here, and of course, this is the Nippon Building. And this is kind of a placeholder for the second phase, Building 2 for this Phase 2. So there were two, a CDC hearing on January 22nd was continued to February 26th. So there were two public hearings, or a continued public hearing for this case. And it was continued because the CDC had some questions, and residents had questions, and they wanted to give the petitioner some time to answer those. So staff put together a table with listing all of the questions that were raised at the public hearing, and both the city staff and the petitioner provided answers and a chart. Those were explained at the February 26th continued public hearing, and of course, that information was in your packet. At the conclusion of the February 26th meeting, the CDC did vote unanimously five no to zero yes, which results in a recommendation for denial. The community development staff is recommending approval with conditions.
Go ahead, Alderman.
Because I'm old, I might not remember the question. So going back a little bit, so the Phase 1 building, or Phase 2, right, Building 1, that's going to get built, and the detention and parking lot are being built with Building 1 at the same time?
So the detention, the substation, Building 1, and a portion of the parking lot. This portion of the site won't get built out until Phase 2.
Okay. Is there a timeline on either one of them?
That is in flux. I believe the petitioner anticipates starting one building, finishing it, which takes about 24 months, and then starting another building. Whether or not he's going to start this one or one in Phase 3 is still in flux. But they will start another building as soon as they've completed this one.
That building, see, all the documents you sent, all the drawings and stuff, because they've been downsized, you can't blow them up and read most of the stuff. So forgive me. The building's going to be seven stories, or 70 feet tall now? It was going to be 75, and now it's going to be 70?
Correct.
And with that reduction, does that reduction have anything to do with the screening that would be on the roof, the sound panels and stuff for the, any of the HVAC or equipment out there, or is that...?
Correct. So the 70 feet is the height of the rooftop screening and all of the rooftop equipment. The building height, where the edge of the top of the building is much lower, and I can't remember off the top of my head, but I'm thinking it's 58-ish. But if you still have a question, we can call the petitioner.
Well, the underlying question is, are we going to have the sound screening up there? That was one of the comments from one of the prior CDC meetings. I just want to make sure that the reduction of height wasn't eliminating those panels?
Absolutely not.
Because that seemed to be a big thing, the potential sound issue.
Yes.
I don't know if it is or it isn't, but it was. And then when they do that site, are they putting the security fence around that entire site as they're building Building 1?
I believe so. That would probably be a question, though, for the petitioner. The issue is, it needs to be secure. So they are going to need to secure the building and the substation and the detention. The question is, you know, if they're going to put in all the fence, or if the fencing, you know, will only go here temporarily. I'm not sure. But yes, fencing will go in, including the fencing proposed around the substation.
Okay.
Okay, continue.
So next, I'll talk about Bryn Mawr Phase 3, and that's the area shown in yellow. The petitioner for this request is Transwestern Development Corporation, and their requests for this evening are for a map amendment, a rezoning to I-1 Industrial Business Park, which would happen after the property is annexed and there's an approval of the annexation agreement. Both of those things will happen at the city council meeting, and also approval of a preliminary subdivision plat and vacation of the interior streets within the site itself. This is the site plan that is for Phase 3. As I showed on the other map, it is contiguous to and immediately south of Phase 2. It's 38 acres in size. 63 single-family lots are included in that site plan area, and they will be consolidated into three lots. The petitioner is proposing three data center buildings, which will total over 500,000 square feet. So in total, between Phase 2 and Phase 3, we anticipate five data center buildings totaling just shy of a million square feet of data centers.
Go ahead, Alderman Woods.
Yeah. So are we approving these buildings at this phase, or we're just approving the annexation and the upzoning and the vacation of the streets, right? So this is just informational?
Correct.
That we're not approving at this meeting?
Correct. It's just a concept site plan that will be attached to the annexation agreement. They will need to come back, both in Phase 2 for the second building, when they get ready to go forward with that. That needs to go back to CDC. And for each of these buildings, or they can also take all three at once, they would need to go back to the CDC with their final site plans, landscape plans, elevations, that type of thing.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure I didn't need to ask questions.
Go ahead, follow up.
While we're at this, this one's for either one of you, maybe Mr. Masters. So that earlier, the residents talked about they had a contract, which is a good thing, you know. Do we have any knowledge of those conversations, and that was, and your conversations with either Transwestern or Cyrus One, you, is that something you could reach out to them and confirm?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Carry on.
There, for those remaining homes, if they are still remaining, which doesn't sound like that's going to happen since they're under contract, the plan was to install a cul-de-sac to serve those homes. Obviously, the plans will be updated when they come in for their final approvals to reflect that cul-de-sac not going in. Construction trucks and delivery trucks will not use Foster Avenue because the codes in both Bensonville and Wooddale do not allow currently trucks on Foster Avenue. Underground stormwater detention is proposed for this phase. This is that Washington street access that was proposed or discussed, but it looks like it will not be necessary. The plan was, although we were vacating all the rights of way within the interior of the neighborhoods, the pavement was going to remain to allow access to these homes until such time as the cul-de-sac was built. But obviously, that is not an issue. The fire district has reviewed all the plans, and they do not have any concerns. This went to the CDC at the February 26th meeting, and there was a public hearing, and the vote from the CDC was similar, and CD staff is also recommending approval of this. I'm happy to answer any questions, and of course, both petitioners are here if there are questions that I can't...
Okay. Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to approve the special use of PUD, a concept plan, and final development plan for Phase 1, special use for major utilities and public service utilities. Finally, subdivision plat and re-subdivision, and the site plan review for the Cyrus 1 data center, Phase 1 Bryn Mawr and Phase 3. That is my motion.
Second.
Okay. Can open up to questions. Go ahead, Alderman Woods.
Just a couple. This is again about the journey more so than... So going through the CDC, joining, likely joining these together, you know, except for a timing thing. Is that was the only reason that we pushed? I mean, these are big projects, right? It seems like a lot of noise was created about this and a lot of pressure created because this was, and I feel, because it was all condensed, as I expressed at a prior meeting and prior things, that that doesn't make me happy. I'm really not appreciative of all that being, you know, shoved down. So was that just a timing thing, and why was that? Why couldn't that one meeting then held and finished out and then go into the two?
It really was happenstance. So we had set a schedule for both of these cases. When they come in, we usually give them target dates for CDC, PZB, and city council. And so it, as they progressed through, I mean, if they, if the petitioner gets us all the plans and they're all in order earlier, we can do their hearing sooner, and if it takes them longer, it, you know, it would be later. And we had targeted the Cyrus 1, or the Bryn Mawr Phase 2 for that earlier meeting in January. And so they were not intended to be at the same meeting. That was going to be on, you know, in January, and then Phase 3 was going to be in February. But because the CDC continued that case, they ended up on the same, on the same agenda. And it kind of made sense to handle them all at the same time because the concerns or the issues related to all of the data center buildings as a whole, the whole development.
Any... Go ahead, Mayor.
Yeah. You mentioned the fire department a couple of times, so everything's been signed off as far as, from what I saw, was all taken care of, correct?
Yes. The fire district and the petitioners have agreed to kind of a path or a route through from Bryn Mawr all the way down to Foster, and the fire district has signed off on it, and they're going to work with the petitioners during construction and after construction to make sure the access is maintained.
Alderman, go ahead.
Thank you. So for Phase 2, since those homes were demolished quite a while ago, what would be an anticipated start date? Because it's been vacant for such a long time to actually see some work being done.
I have talked to the petitioner, and they, he believes that their plans should be ready to submit for building permit. They're not quite finalized. These are very detailed types of plans that are needed, mechanical and electrical and plumbing and all of that, stormwater engineering. They are shooting to submit sometime in April, and hopefully, we would get that approved within 60 days, let's say, being conservative, and so they could really break around this spring.
Okay. Thank you.
Alderman Messina.
Alderman Ames asked one of the questions, but I'll ask the other. As far as policing, I got a call, and I don't know if they got their streets confused, but they talked about potential truck traffic on Bryn Mawr. Is that going to be allowed? And if so, are we going to police? If not, is that going to be policed?
So Bryn Mawr is actually where we want the truck traffic to go, because there are no, there are no residences around.
It's Foster's. Sorry, I didn't mean to...
Foster, probably.
Yeah.
Yeah. Foster was the concern because they're a residential south, and the petitioner, the property owner now, has confirmed that they will not have any truck traffic coming from Foster. The bigger impact is obviously during construction. Afterwards, really, it's very low impact. There's 30 to 50 employees there, and there's not, you know, any significant truck traffic. So they've confirmed that all traffic, truck traffic will not go down Foster.
Follow up?
I mean, it was my understanding's Foster, but this person was adamant. So, okay. I think I'm good. Thank you.
Okay.
Alderman Sismarski, go ahead.
Yeah, just to go off of Alderman Messina, first of all, truck traffic does happen on Foster. I've tried to stop it numerous times. So, I mean, that's, you're saying that no trucks are going to go on there? I don't believe that, because I get calls every day. Secondly, what's the noise? Has anybody done any noise, or some affiliations to what the residents are going to hear from Foster over, from these buildings?
So as part of their application process, Cyrus 1 did submit, or did have a noise study prepared. They have to meet the IEPA standards for sound, so it's pretty restrictive. Actually, the requirements that they need to meet of the IEPA, which they say they will, is lower than the existing ambient noise that was registered when the sound study was done.
They have that in documentation?
They do. They've submitted that, if you're interested in it.
Alderman Curial.
I had a question about the fence. My understanding is an eight-foot privacy fence? Is that correct?
It's an eight-foot, they've got bars.
Bars on top, but is it a privacy fence?
No. So there is a privacy fence that will be going around the ComEd station, very standard to all of their facilities. I can't remember if it's six or eight feet tall. But obviously, it's not going to cover all of the ComEd equipment that will be seen above it.
Okay, so we'll be able to see the inside.
Sure. But the ComEd substation will be back here, and so you really shouldn't see much of anything.
And what's the setback for the fence? And what's the setback for the fence?
The setback?
From the property line? Is it going to be on the property line?
It will be on the property line.
It'll surround the entire campus?
Yes. The plan is for that to go all the way around.
Alderman Artie Woods?
Yeah, to Alderman's Sismarski's point, I don't think there's going to be an issue with the decibel level, but from all the news stories I saw about Cyrus One in Arizona, the issues they're having with this constant hum and drone, I would love if the applicant could comment on that, kind of the status of where that is today, because I think that was a couple of years ago, and if that could be a potential issue.
Okay. Yes, please.
Please state your name, please.
Brad, how was Cyrus One? So with respect to the noise here, we have the benefit of having a new building and being able to spec the equipment specifically to the standard that was referenced, that IEPA standard. I think the challenge that we run into with some of our older sites is the equipment gets older, or the perception of the, the noise changes, or just, you know, there's changes. And so, then you have to go back and, and address those. And that involves various things you can do. You can add new screening walls, you can add padding, you can change out the equipment. And so, those are the things that we do when an issue arises. And sometimes, we might be built, when we build the project, the regulations might state a certain decibel level, but if the community builds up around it, or the ordinance changes, we've got to go back and retrofit. So I think where we, where you, you mentioned the one site in Arizona, that's one issue where those kind of things are, have taken place. We do have 49 other locations where we don't have, you know, sound issues. And like I said, in this case, being able to spec the equipment from day one to meet the standard is, is really going to help us avoid the issues down the line.
Okay, go ahead, follow up.
I guess, so my question for staff would be, if it's not exceeding a decibel level per our ordinance and the residents who are close by, as these get built out and they're six or seven or whatever, what kind of recourse would we have if they're not exceeding the decibel level? If there's a hum, or this, the people who are describing it as this droning, and again, to your point, maybe it is just the one, I don't, I don't know. What recourse can we have?
If it's in compliance with the regulations, there would be, you know, no action that the city could take.
Thank you.
Alderman Woods?
Thanks. So just to drill down on that a little bit, so we have a, within our ordinance, we have a certain decibel sound level that they, that building owners have to meet, right?
Well, it's actually, the wording in our UDO is very strange. It doesn't actually list a decibel level, but there is a standard in there that needs to be met. The IEPA regulations are the ones that contain a decibel level.
In our, to follow up on that, so in our code, is our code addressed the IEPA, or draw that in as one of the codes that you have to meet?
Yes.
So they'll, they'll have to meet the standard. And the only reason it's a big thing is obviously planes, trains and automobiles, that's the only thing around Wooddale. So sound being suggestive, what bothers you doesn't bother me. Now, as I drive around and talk to people dealing with the airport and the trains over the year, getting the, the horns, getting to stop beeping the horns on the trains, this becomes a big contentious issue. That's why I was concerned about the screening. You weren't lowering the building by eliminating the screening type of thing. And I know that one of your engineers got up and said that they would have an acoustical screening on there. So, but that's the concern, is, you know, if you guys are taking care of that, I think we're, we're good. And if you, if that's the standard you have to meet, then. Stacy, do we do any testing or follow up? I know on projects in the past, I've known that we've had, not here, engineers come out and have to test for a certain sound level. Do we do any of that, or will that be a requirement?
I have had that in other communities, but really, it's not something that we would have, we would go out and do for every business. So if there were a complaint, we would work with the property owner and would expect them to have somebody with a sound, you know, do a sound study. And then, since it's an IEPA regulation, we would work with them to make sure that the report was approved and accepted.
Would we not want to test it? And we tested the fire department when they put a fan on the side of their building. I mean, this is a little bigger project. I mean, I can't imagine that that would be a huge expense, just to have an understanding, does it meet the standard? When we walk away, so we don't get into arbitrary conversations when somebody calls two days after they open, you go, oh, it's too loud. At least we're armed with the knowledge of it, pass the test. We, we know it passed the test.
If that comes up, we would certainly have someone go out and do it. Our equipment, where, that we have, is not nearly as sophisticated as people that are, you know, in this business, companies that do this type of thing.
I didn't think we had any sound engineers on staff, and our equipment.
Alderman, Missina.
Yeah, I mean, to that point, I disagree. We're setting a very bad precedent, a very expensive precedent, so I would not be in favor of any of that testing. Reactive, yes. Just like the O'Hare noise, we do that. But I would not be in favor of doing that, because we do it, for one, we better do it for all.
Mayor?
I don't have a problem with the testing, because we get a lot of complaints about the airport, right? So we should at least know that they're in compliance. And honestly, anyone who's close to residential, we should, I don't have a problem doing that. And he just said, they're building from scratch, they're going to have all the right equipment, so it shouldn't be a problem. I don't have a problem with making sure that's a test.
Go ahead, Director.
I would refer to Attorney Bond.
Go ahead.
Yeah, what we were doing in that instance is, we would look to the property owner, have them submit their report. The city would, would, in all likelihood, then, secure the services of sound engineer. It doesn't, doesn't make any sense. We represent a number of other communities, and we've gone out to do that in the event that you get, you know, citizen complaints, and then give that information and to verify, I feel Ronald Reagan trust, but verify that the information that's been provided from the property owners, a sound engineer is consistent with the decibel levels. And if it's not, then we have enforcement authority to get that into compliance. But as was represented, the benefit of a new facility, it's like you're, you get to get what you want and not what you're stuck with.
Alderman, Missina?
I mean, are we setting a precedent by doing that, or is it just, can we do these one-offs, like proof, proof compliance and move on?
Go ahead, Attorney Bond.
Yeah, we wouldn't do it unless we got a complaint that there was, it was out of compliance, and then, so it would be, and we do that with other, other code violations. A neighbor might complain, and then we go out, gather the information, if we need to bring in some expertise, we do that. So it would be handled, very similar to those other circumstances.
I just want to make sure that everyone's being held to consistent standard, right? So we hold them to this standard, then we better hold everybody else in the future. To me, that just makes Wooddale not as attractive. So go back to what I said, based on your comment, I don't, I'm not in favor. I think it's a waste of money.
Mayor, go ahead.
Unless we get a complaint.
Yeah, again, so honestly, the neighbors on the south side of Foster, really Bensonville, but we should be good neighbors and just make sure everything's up to spec.
Absolutely.
I, I think, he already said it, I'm sure they're going to do the right job.
Yeah, and just to close that point, I mean, we, we don't want complaints just as much as the neighbors don't want to make complaints. We, it's, it's more, it's.
Okay.
Yeah, it just, it obviously doesn't make sense for us to, we want to avoid complaints completely. We want to be quiet neighbors, and we'll do everything we can. We will, we always do everything we can to make sure that we're mindful of those, you know, those types of things.
Okay, Alderman Woods, last question, then we've got to vote on this. Go ahead, Alderman Woods.
All right. I know we're all in a hurry, but we have, we have tested facilities, businesses, commercial properties, the fire department, multiple places in town for sound. So it's not that big a deal. Like, I get what you're saying, I understand your apprehension of setting a precedent, but we've done it in the past. I know, because I've gotten the complaints about it, so.
Okay, so let's have a roll call on this, please. We have a, we have a motion, we have a second.
Alderman Art Woods?
No.
Alderman Curialli?
Yes.
Alderman Missina?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob? Not here. Alderman Sismarski?
No.
Alderman Ames?
Yes.
Alderman Artie Woods?
No.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes. So next, we have, I'll make a motion to approve the map amendment rezoning upon annexation, via annexation agreement and preliminary subdivision plat, including vacation of streets for Cyrus One data center. Phase Two Bryn Mawr, Phase Three, that is my motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any questions on the motion? If there are none, roll call, please.
Alderman Art Woods?
No.
Alderman Curialli?
Yes.
Alderman Missina?
Yes.
Alderman Sismarski?
No.
Alderman Ames?
Yes.
Alderman Artie Woods?
No.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes. Okay. So next is, want to consider items for, items to consider for future meetings. We have the UDO text amendment for public hearing signs, and that's coming up March 28th. And then, we have also 118 Homestead lot variation that's coming up March 28th. And also, the facade program improvement coming up this spring or summer. And next is the building code amendments, RFP, coming up in summer. And last, we have the downtown park site plan, RFP, also coming up this summer. Any other items to consider at future meetings? If there are none, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Hold in favor, say.
Aye.
We're adjourned. Thank you.